Okay, thank you. Under discussion items number three, Senate Bill 378. Now, this is for those of you who maybe don't have a copy of the agenda. This is the Senate bill prior to it being amended. So I'll try to get through this pretty quick for y'all. Item number A is the number of commissioners. Again, this is under the original bill. The, let me see if I have this right. This bill would change. Currently, the statute states that at least three commissioners on the New Mexico Racing Commission have to be practical horse breeders. The bill prior to being amended would stated that the bill would change this to no more than two horse breeders could serve on the commission. This means that there could be zero, one or two, but no more than two. Item number B, the division of funds from the unclaimed tickets. The funds we received from the unclaimed tickets for overnight New Mexico bred races would be reduced. The racetracks would now get to keep a larger portion of those funds. Item C, the 10% breeders awards. That go out to the breeder of any New Mexico bred wins a race in New Mexico would be drastically reduced to about 9% of what they are now. For example, normally, if you normally would have received an award for $1,000, that award would go down to $90. And item number D, the division of the simulcast funds. Funds from simulcast racetracks would be allowed to keep a larger portion of the proceeds from simulcast races, and this would reduce what goes to the horsemen and the breeders. So, again, item number four, this reflects the new proposal to amend Senate Bill 378. The numbers of commissioners has been changed to not less than two commissioners with practical breeding knowledge. Under 4B, division of funds from the unclaimed tickets, there's no change to that language. Item number 4C, the 10% breeders awards would now come from the purse accounts. And under item number 4D, the divisions of funds from the simulcast. Again, that's no change from the original bill. Mary, did I get that right? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you got it all.
Okay, great. Is Mr. Blanchard here?
He is.
Okay, Paul Blanchard is here from the Downs at Albuquerque. He's here to state his case for why he thinks 378, Senate Bill 378, would benefit us. And I'd just like to mention this before we get started, that the board is here to listen, not just to Mr. Blanchard's presentation, but when we get to public comments, to hear from everyone present that would like to make a comment. And then for those of the, I'll repeat this when we get to the public comment session. For those that are either not comfortable making a public comment, or if we run out of time, we encourage you to email the association with your comments. And again, the board will consider everything that we hear tonight and then ultimately come to a decision. Okay, so this is not going to be a Q and A for the board or for Mr. Blanchard. We're here to listen, okay? So, Mr. Blanchard, welcome. We appreciate you coming. And you may go ahead whenever you're ready. Is he unmuted?
Yes, but I don't hear him. Are you speaking, Mr. Blanchard? Yeah, he is, he's unmuted, but I'm not getting any sound.
Paul, we can't hear you.
He might be muted on his computer.
Mary, can you tell, how many, how many folks do we have now, Mary?
We have 63 right now.
Okay.
And more joining as we speak.
Good turnout, good.
Yeah. Yeah, you might not have a microphone on your computer.
Can you see?
Yeah.
Mary, do we know how to reach him?
I have his phone number, you want me to try to call?
Yeah, you can try to get on, on his phone or something because it's not, I guess he doesn't have any microphone or it's not working.
Go ahead and try it, Norma, if you would.
I don't know what he looks like. I got forwarded to voicemail.
He's probably on the phone to text support.
When you hand this computer up there just last week.
I see Beth's phone too.
Open that scan on me.
Yeah, but I have to ask.
That's what I'm gonna do. Hey, my audio was much faster.
Beth, do you know how to get a hold of Mr. Blanchard?
Can you pick up? And that was his cell phone, no, pick up.
Beth, can you get in touch with him?
Uh, can you unmute me?
Yeah, you're unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just texted him.
Okay.
And told him that you're waiting for him and I didn't hear back. So I'll try to call him, okay?
Okay.
But somebody did call him and he's probably on another phone call, shocking. I'll text him again, okay?
Okay, thank you. Well, Tom, I don't, I don't, I think he's disconnected. I don't see him any longer. Well, here comes somebody on the phone. Do you want to just go to comments?
Can you hear me now?
Oh.
Yep, Paul, is that you?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I got something wrong with, I have something wrong with my audio on the computer. I don't know what's, I had one earlier today and I don't know what's the matter with it, so.
Okay, well, the floor is yours, Paul, so I just, I just explained to the folks, if you didn't hear it earlier, that as far as the New Mexico Horse Breeders Board is concerned, this is a listening session for us. We're going to let you make your presentation and then we're going to take comments from the attendees, and we've also invited them to email us as well. It's not a Q and A session. Right, again, we're, we're here to listen, so the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, well, let me start off by saying that on this, I was asked by the chairman of the commission and by Commissioner Smith to try to, try to see if there was some way to work this out on this bill with the breeders and, and to, to see if there was some commonality that we could, we could come to. So with that, that's when we started this discussion about trying to see if there was a way that, that we could make this work for everybody. And we normally don't do that, as you know, so this is, this is, you know, kind of a first deal, but one of the things that came off right off the bat when we, when I started talking to some of the breeders about this was the fact that a lot of this, a lot of the breeders don't understand even where this money comes from to the New Mexico breeders from the racetrack. So part of that was, was, was just trying to let people understand that the monies that come from racing to the breeders come from simulcasting and from live based on 5/8% of a win-place-and-show handle, less 8% for the Mexico Breeders Administration. In 2019, that was a $40,248 bill that, that came from the Downs. And they get, on the same year, there is the New Mexico Horse Breeders Exotic, which is 1 and 3/8ths of exotic handle for, that, that they get, the breeders get, and less than 8% New Mexico Horse Breeders Administration. The Breed Award is 10% a winning purse of the breeder of record. That's the one we're talking about. And then you get 5% of the retainage on interstate wagers. And then the New Mexico breakage, 50% of the total breakage to enhance the New Mexico Breed Stakes races. So in 2019, just from the racetrack, not any gaming, the Downs at Albuquerque sent the breeders $496,000. Actually, 496,331.90. So on top of that, the Downs sent $1,889,976. So all told, that was $2,362,000. Once you figured their share of the outs. So the reality is, is that, that we're talking, this bill does not, does not change anything other than this one line item, which is the Breed Award. It doesn't change the other, all the other sources of income that the breeders get from the track based on handle and, and exotics and all that. I want to mention to you that some, some of these percentages are on, have nothing to do with breed horses. These are somebody that comes in and bets on Saratoga on an open thoroughbred race. But this, the money is still coming in from these percentages. So with that, the one that we addressed in this bill was, well, a couple of things, but the money one we addressed in this bill was the 10% that, that goes to the breeder of record, the winning horse. So that's made up basically a 5% that money that comes from the breeders through these funds that have been transferred from the Downs to the breeders. The other 5% of that 10%, or the other half of that 10%, just comes from the racetrack. It doesn't come from racing, it doesn't come from gaming, it just comes right out of our general operating account. But it's not, we don't get any, it's not, it hasn't been supported by anything for us, just comes out of whatever cash register it comes out of. So that's the one that, that, and, and because of that, there's, there is a, not as much interest in running as many breed races as should be run because of the fact that there's nothing to support this, it just comes right out of our pocket. So what, what we did on this thing was to try to figure out a way that, and some of the breeders said, hey, look, you know, this is really important to us, the, the, the breeder of record, they need to get the money, this is a tough deal right now, and I understand that. We've had, we all had a tough year. So in, in this process of trying to figure out a way to, to make it more palatable to, to the breeders, we looked at saying, okay, if we can come to a negotiation on this, what, what this would, we would leave everything else alone, we would take this, this 10% and we would go ahead and put it across all purse money. It, open horses, the whole nine yards. So basically, it would go into the 52 million. The breeders would get the, the, breeders would get the 10%. They would get everything they have gotten before and they would still get the 10% on the, on the winning purse to the breeder of record. So that would be of no loss to the breeders at all. As a matter of fact, if you really look at it, what would happen is if we took the 10% and, and did it across, across all wagering or all purse money, the breeders would actually save that other, that other 50% of that 10% because that doesn't change from the monies that we send you. You wouldn't have to add that over here to this personally longer, it would actually just come out of, out of the total purses for the breeders. So the, the, that's basically it. I don't know whether, what are the issues? The breeders, we talked about changing that back to say there'd be no less than two practical breeders on the board. And then what other, what other item did you have, Tommy, that you read in on your initial, on your initial comment? Tommy?
Well, yeah, Paul, we, we addressed the number of commissioners that you just mentioned.
Right.
The division of funds from unclaimed tickets. The 10% breeders award you covered in the division of funds from the simulcast.
Right. Now, what's the, what, what are you talking about, the, the, the division of funds from simulcast? What, what, what are you, what's your concern of that?
Well, there's, there's no change from the original bill on that, from what we read, as well as the division of funds from unclaimed tickets.
You're talking about the outs?
Mary, you want to address this, so you can elaborate?
Yeah, I believe that the bill would allow the racetracks to keep a little larger share on the unclaimed tickets and on the simulcast money.
Right.
Okay, it, it, it allows us to keep, it allows us to keep on the unclaimed tickets. It allows us to keep a, a larger portion of that, but I mean, in reality, on the outs during non-live season, non-live racing, that, I don't, I don't even know why that would even be a question why we keep that. Secondly, we, you know, we're having to pay during non-live all the cost of the totes, all the cost of the personnel. We're, you know, we, we pay all of that in our share. In addition, you know, it, it's, it's our maintenance people, our house cleaning people who, who pick up those outs tickets. We, we pay for their salary to pick it, otherwise, you know, where would, where would that money even be at for the breeders? So the point is, is that outs is, is something totally different. The, the breakage portion is, is, it, it stays the same except during non-live. I think it's, it goes to 60, 20, 20 instead of third, a third and a third.
So, Paul, fundamentally, well, fundamentally, Paul, what, we're, we're not disputing this, but the funds from the unclaimed tickets would be reduced, so we're not arguing that, you know, that remains the same, right?
Yeah, and instead of a third, instead of a third, a third and a third, it'd be 60, 20, 20.
Right, and on item number four, you guys get to the tracks, keep a larger portion, portion of the proceeds from simulcast races.
How's, how do we do that?
Was that not correct?
Not that I know, not, what's that?
I believe it's in the bill.
Well, are you talking about the, that, you talking about the percentage of our, of our overhead that were approved to up to 5%?
I'm not sure.
Our impression, our impression, go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you use it for, but I just looked through the bill and it was one of the changes. There were four changes where word was changed. And it said that you, a larger portion, I guess, for your expenses.
Yeah, they're talking about for, for our expenses.
Right.
So, but that's, that, we're already allowed that. But you're, you're, you're talking about, you're talking about, if you're talking about the, we get 3.8% now and we're by statute allowed to get 5%. And so it's, it's just saying that we're allowed to get 5%. It's already in the statute that way, it just says up to 5% instead of 5%.
I see, so you're not taking as much, and now you will be taking 5%.
Yeah, but we're, it's, they, they approved 3.8 about, I don't even know, Mary, probably, I bet it was probably 12 years ago or something like that, they, they approved 3.8%. We, and it's never increased since, since, since that period of time, that, that long ago. It could have been 15 years, that's been a long time. And we, it's never gone up since then. So all we're saying is, let, we'll take the 5% that's in the statute already.
Okay, so we're not, we're not arguing that, we're just stating what's in the bill, so.
Exactly. All, all that's in the bill that changes that is just saying that, that we can, we can, instead of taking 3.8% for expenses, we can take 5%, which the statute allows us to do.
For simulcast, from simulcast races, right?
Yeah, for, for, yeah, just offset costs.
Right.
But as you know, Tom, our fees have gone up every, everywhere you look and, and on, on everything, so.
Right, so we're just trying to understand the bill, Paul, so there'd be essentially a 1.2% reduction. So we're, we're, we're not in disagreement, we're just stating the fact, what, what the bill contains, okay? So.
That's correct, that's, you've got it, but that's, that's the only thing we're talking about, we're not talking about trying to change anything else.
Right, okay. Paul, did you have anything else to add? Because if, if you're finished, then I'm going to go ahead and open this to public comment.
Yeah, so again, what I, what I think we, what need to focus on is there's all of, all of the other items, for instance, in 19, that made up the 496,000 that, that was sent outside of gaming from the Downs to the breeders. If we do it based on what the, what we're talking about on amending it, based on trying to, the spirit of, of trying to work it out, there are no changes to any of those other items or any of those other dollar amounts. The only changes there would be, would be to say you will still get the 10% for the, for the breeder of, of the winning horse, you'll still get the 10%. There will be no change there for you, it just comes across the whole, the whole purse structure, 52 million. But at the same time, it'll actually make the breeders some extra money because instead of them using some of this money to pay for their half of that 10%, they will now be able to keep that for persons.
Okay, and the, the other change, Paul, was the number of commissioners.
Yeah, I, I say.
You amended that.
Right.
From at least three to at least two, correct? What was the purpose of that?
Well, the only, the only reason for that is, is number one, I, I don't have a big hangup on that one whether, but you know, because there's no such thing as, there's no definition of practical breeder. So there's no real legal definition of practical breeder. The, the fact is, is that it, it always, in the last 25 years of me looking at this, it's always been a little point of contention that you would have a majority of, of the commissioners as, as practical breeders, which then automatically lends itself to a conflict, right? And then it actually goes into some conflicts with the ethics statutes, but I'm not as hung up on that, Tommy. If, if, that particular one, you know, is not as, not as big a deal to me if we changed it to, if we changed it to at least two or even say at least three, it's not as big a deal to me.
Okay, well, that's just a question that's been asked from several of our members, so thanks for clarifying that.
It's just a conflict deal, it'd be, it'd be like saying, you know, you have three track manager, at least three track managers on the, on the commission, you know, it's, it's just, it's just a little bit because then you have a, then right there, you have a majority anyway, so.
Right.
So, but, but that was the only reason that, that that even came up, it was just part of this house cleaning.
Okay, all right, so I appreciate that answer.
Yeah. Is there any questions at all you want, you have any more questions than me?
Well, no, again, I think that's it from us, Paul, I appreciate it, and
Yeah.
You don't have to stick around unless you want to, you're welcome to stick around. I'm going to open this up for, uh, public comments.
Okay.
So again, for those of you that missed our, my opening remarks, we're going to open this for public comments, Mary will unmute you, let you in, let you in. We're restricting this to three minutes per person, so obviously try to get your point across as quickly as you can, and again, if you're not comfortable making a public comment, we encourage you to contact us via email and, and like I said before, we're here to listen. We're not going to respond to your comments, we're just here to listen. So with that said, Mary, I'll let you begin. If you have a public comment, please raise your hand using the icon on your device.
I only see one at this point. Okay. Okay, Flaco, would you like to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. And I guess my comment would be on the owners. I think since the pandemic last March 15th, they, they, they deserve kudos, they've stuck with us, they've allowed us to take care of their horses, to, to pay our grooms, and they've ran it reduced purses, reduced race days, and currently no racing at all in New Mexico. So my concern and my reason for being against this bill is because if we go on 2019 figures, then the other 5% that we're talking about now coming out of the purse fund would be $650,000. So it doesn't matter if you broke it down by day, by race, however you want to break it down, you're still talking about $650,000 less going to our owners who are paying the bills and putting on the show. And my job is to look out for my owners, and for that reason, I am against this bill, thank you.
Okay, Galaxy A10E, you had your hand up. Would you like to speak? And I don't see any other hands up.
No other public comments, this surprises me.
Yeah, we got 65 people here.
Okay.
Oh, here's one. Let's see, Susan's iPad, I believe that's Susan Vescovo. Susan, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I, I think another concern, and I'm not speaking to someone to clarify this in any way for the Horsemen's Association, I'm speaking as an individual. But I think, yeah, our Breeders Awards are really important, but also but also on the one-third, one-third, one-third that comes from simulcast, you know, I think for that to be reduced to us at this time, you know, it's terrible, I just did the Albuquerque numbers last year, that amounted to twenty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars, I believe in ninety-one cents, but the racetrack got to keep, and that the horseman got to keep, the horseman got to add it to purses. Uh, on the breeder's side, I believe it was twenty-eight thousand, uh, a little over twenty-eight thousand, almost twenty-nine thousand dollars. And, you know, I just think those dollars are precious right now, when you look at the millions that are generated by the casino, I mean, what we get from our simulcast money, from unclaimed tickets, you know, is minimal in comparison, and so I strongly oppose this bill, thank you for your time.
Hey, looks like the only other person with their hand up right now is one of our board members, Suzy Brader. I'm sorry?
Larry String.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Larry String, okay. Can you unmute Larry?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
I, I agree with Flaco, I'm against this bill. You know, it's, what, and I agree with Susan, what these casinos make is huge, huge, and have been for years. And I, and I know they took a hard lick last year, and everybody did, as owners really have, and breeders really have took a hit. And to pile on right now, to ta- to take some of our money away, because we've started nearly at zero building these purse counts, where usually we're building up all year to run for two or three months, and, but, we're just, this is not the time to do it, I don't want a good time to do it, but right now, at, when our purse structure is so low to take that kind of money out of it, is just detrimental to our industry. That could be the final nail in our coffin, and I vote against it, but thank you, that's all I have.
I agree with Larry too, and Susan Vescovo, and Flaco.
I agree.
Okay, well, I just want to remind our board members, um, I, I, I appreciate you weighing in, but we're here to, we're here to listen to the other folks, and then when our board gets together, you'll, you'll have your opportunity, once we, once we get all the comments from the folks and look at their emails, hopefully we get some that come in, then we'll hold another meeting, and, and, uh, then individual board members will discuss this in depth, okay? Mary, do we have anybody else?
Yes, uh, Laney Enterprises. Are you there, Deborah?
Yeah.
Whoops, I'm sorry, I think I just, I just muted you, so if you'll unmute again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I appreciate Paul coming and, uh, giving his reasons behind, uh, what he's doing with the bill. And, and I can see his, his side of things, but when I, when I look at the impact that it will have on the purses and the breeders, um, I mean, there's a lot of people that are trying to, have gotten out or, or thinking about getting out already, and, you know, I kind of agree with Larry Strain that, well, I don't kind of agree, I do agree with Larry Strain, that I just don't think this is the time.
Thank you, Deborah. Anybody else, Mary?
Well, Mike Logan has his hand up, but he is one of our board members.
Well, Mike, we're, we're, I've, uh, already made that statement, I think, I think we need to hold off.
Okay, we do have another, we have, uh, Richard Erhard, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mary, uh, thank you, Tom, uh, Breeders, I appreciate you putting this, uh, meeting together to get today, this evening. About five days ago, I polled the, the board of the New Mexico Horsemen's Association, and the New Mexico Horsemen's Association State Board unanimously opposes SB three seventy-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, Jared Rogers.
Hi, Jared.
Hey, Tom, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'll keep this short and sweet, uh, you know, I'm, I'm against this, and I've, I've kind of been really vocal on all this stuff, you know, it seems like no matter what is going on, especially this year, but the last couple of years, everybody's, it seems like the horsemen and the horse breeders are the lowest on the totem pole, and what everybody needs to realize, whether it's tracks, casinos, or what, without the horsemen, horse breeder, there is no, you know, there is no race. But I think that's our, that's the biggest thing that everybody needs to realize, you know, we've stuck together through all this stuff, and it seems like every time these guys get an inch, they're working to try and get that extra mile, you know, I'm completely against this.
Thanks, Jared.
Okay, uh, Mindy McArthur.
Hi, Mindy, you have the floor.
Hello, it's good to see everybody, I thought Mr. Blentra, um, did a nice presentation. I've been trying to look at the figures as to how it would affect the numbers, but I haven't seen them posted anywhere, so when we're looking at these percentages, I think it's really important that you use actual figures and use a comparison, maybe going back five years, for how much the five percent is from the horseman now and from the tracks, and then how much the simulcast breakage, and what that changed, how it will affect you moving forward. I think those are really important figures to look at whenever you're making a decision like this, because it's really easy to say one-eighth of a percentage or thirty-three percent, but without having the actual figures to back it up, you can't really make a, an informed decision that's gonna affect the entire industry, so that was really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy.
Hey, that's, anybody else want to raise your hand?
Clock is, clock is ticking, folks.
Mary, Tom, maybe tell them how to, to raise their hands, to, you know, because if, if you're not familiar with Zoom, it could, maybe they don't know where it's at, you know?
Well, on my iPhone, at the bottom of the screen, there's a, of, on the far right, on the bottom of the screen, it says more. And if you press that, there's an option to raise your hand, I'm not sure what it looks like on a laptop. But, but there is an icon that, that you have to press that says raise your hand.
Oh, W L, I, did you want to speak, W L, I do see you, can you unmute yours? W L, did you want to speak?
I wanted to, can you hear me?
Yes.
W L, did you want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, welcome.
Thank y'all, I want to thank Paul and all you guys, uh, putting this deal on. You know, uh, New Mexico breeders, as far as I'm concerned, you know, we, we can't, I don't think we can afford to lose this, I hope we can come to something, but, you know, when we're selling these horses to these owners, I think that that ten percent is a good calling call for us selling horses. I haven't seen, I haven't seen the numbers, I just heard the numbers from Paul, and, uh, I'd like to see the numbers and, and see if somebody can really figure it out, I'm still, really, I'm lost, and I think a lot of other people are lost on this, and, and like I say, it's, uh, I can't really tell you if, uh, I don't think, none of us don't need to lose, because everybody's been through hell all, all year, you know? So, I don't know, uh, I think it, uh, we need to get something done, and I think we need to get it done pretty quick, but, uh, I don't know the numbers, I'm really honest, I still don't understand the numbers. Uh, I haven't seen them published.
W L, I think, I think, you know, that's been, that question's been raised a couple of times, and I'm probably not supposed to comment here, but I'm gonna do it anyway, well, I think we can put together some numbers that make sense and publish them and let everybody know. Mary, is that reasonable, do you think? Of course, of course, I'm tasking you with another job.
Sure, I know that we certainly looked at two thousand nineteen, uh, which was a pretty good year for everybody before the pandemic, and, uh, you know, the horse, horse breeders, I'm sorry, the horsemen's, the horsemen's six hundred and fifty thousand, and the, the five racetracks accumulated, we paid six hundred and fifty thousand to the ten percent track reader awards. And that was the total.
How much did the breed, how much did each racetrack, what did it cost them, each racetrack, do you have that?
I can, I do, I know that in two thousand nineteen, the Downs at Albuquerque, let's see, it was, it was about a hundred and six thousand dollars. Whereas Zia Park was about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Loso Downs was about seventy-five thousand. Sunday Park was fifty-six thousand. And Sunland Park was about a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So, you know, the longer the meet, the bigger the purses, the more, the more you're gonna pay.
What about, uh, where does that six hundred thousand come in at, Mary?
It's six hundred.
You know, they said that all five racetracks paid six hundred thousand, uh, so how much did all five?
That's the relative amount of what I just told you, so each racetrack paid a portion of the six hundred and fifty thousand, which would have been half of the ten percent track readers' awards. The total, uh, ten percent in two thousand nineteen was one million, two ninety-seven, three twenty-five, sixty. So half of it came from the horseman's purse, half of it came from the racetracks, and I just broke that down. So like the Downs at Albuquerque paid a hundred and six thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen, it also ran fifty-five dates.
That answer your question?
Let's talk about this shit. Fucking time to get, let's get this shit on.
Let's, uh, Mary, I think we need to mute some folks here.
I see that, um, okay, so we have some more people, uh, were you done, W L? Yeah, okay, all right, so next is, uh, Miguel Gallegos.
My, my, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Miguel.
Well, I mean, uh, I mean, the numbers are, are pretty plain and clear, it's just basically the tracks don't want to pay anything, and they're gonna take it out of the horsemen's, horsemen's already paying half of what it is, they want a horseman to pay everything, and the tax pay nothing, so it's not too hard to figure that thing out. The reality is, is that we have a lot more competition from states like Texas now, and Arizona has a big, huge, bill going through that's gonna make Arizona a lot more attractive, so they're gonna have a hard time filling race. And if they don't start catering to New Mexico breeds, I don't see how they're gonna fill races. And, and that, that's something that they need to figure out in the, in the future, is how are they gonna fill these races when there's bigger purse money in Texas, bigger purse money in Arizona, and those horses don't come here anymore, they better start helping out the breeders here, they're not gonna be able to fill the race.
Thank you, Miguel.
Okay, next is, uh, Billy Smith.
Go ahead, Billy.
Can you unmute Billy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Billy.
You know, it's pretty easy to figure, you just divide that six hundred thousand dollar number by how many races were in two thousand and nineteen, and that tells you how much difference there will be on each purse, I think there was like twenty-one hundred races in two thousand nineteen, is that right, Mary, total, every, all tracks?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that figured.
I think it's about twenty-one hundred, anyway, what it does, it changes each purse two hundred and seventy dollars. If you did, if, if they did it like the first proposal, it only changed the purse a hundred and thirty-five dollars across the board. My, I'm not saying one way or the other, where I'm against it or for it, but are you willing to gamble that it passes the way he wrote it up? Pretty, it would be smart to have an alternative in case it did pass the way it's written before the changes, if it passes as it changes, as it, as it is right now, you're gonna lose, you're gonna get ninety dollars versus a hundred dollars on the racetracks. So, when they asked me to start working on this, I said, well, let's find a way where it doesn't cost the breeders any money. And this didn't cost the breeders any money. Now, what you're doing, if you don't, you know, kind of work through this, basically up to your board, and he does get it passed, it crushes the breeders on this deal, so, you know, I, I, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm not in a position to be for it or against it, but they asked me to work on it and try to figure out how it wouldn't cost the breeders any money, and this is the best alternative, like he said, the five percent that comes out of your, uh, wherever you get your, your five, or fifty percent, wherever you get your fifty percent, now that's gonna go to the breeders already. So if you, if you change that, and let you go ahead and pay the five, uh, fifty percent like you normally do, and let the other five percent come out of the horsemen's purses, it's only a hundred and thirty-seven dollars average a race difference, which, to me, it's a great, it's a good alternative, thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Alrighty, um, let's see, Deborah Laney has her hand up again, so. Can you unmute?
Yes, I, I don't think I used my three minutes earlier, so I'm gonna.
Nobody really has, so.
I'm just, I, I just wanted to say, and I forget who made the point, I think it was W L, you know, we've lost a lot of race dates to, uh, races and race dates, so, you know, I, I've already said I'm against it, but, uh, I think that we've got to look at what we've lost already, and, you know, I, I'm just against it, I think we've got to hold where we are, okay, I'm done, no more.
Okay, anybody else? I don't see, oh, that Galaxy A one zero E, who is that? This person right here, did you want to speak? You keep raising your hand.
Yes, this is Randy Shala, can you hear me?
Okay, there you are, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good deal, I'm kinda, um, I'm not real tech smart, so you gotta forgive me there, that hand was up there and I didn't even know what it was for. Anyway, this is my first Zoom meeting, and, and, uh, long story short, I'm really opposed to this thing. They're just trying, you know, political politicians trying to strongarm, and the camp, big, you know, like the casinos trying to get all they can. The horsemen need to get all they can, because that's the survival of racing, and that's about all I have to say, but I'm, I have to say, I am completely opposed to it.
Thank you, Randy, and you passed on your first Zoom meeting, you did good.
Thanks, alright, thank you guys.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, Jim Hernandez, ready, can you unmute Jim?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I think that it would be prudent for maybe the Breeders Association to put all this down on numbers, uh, I know there's a lot of percentages being thrown around. put all this down on numbers. I know there's a lot of percentages being thrown around. You know, 5% comes from the breeder's fund, and another 5% comes from the racetrack. It kind of sounds to me like the 5% that comes from the, from the racetrack will be depleted into, you know, purses that are for open horses. So when you start talking about breeders are still going to get the 10%, well, is that 10% of $1 million, or is that 10% of $100,000? It's a big difference there. You know, when we speak about percentage. There's people like myself who, you know, I breed and sell. I don't, I don't race. So couldn't put any more money into open purpose. It doesn't really benefit the New Mexico breeder. It just benefits, you know, out-of-state owners that, you know, that, that run horses. For our industry, our industry to survive, I think we got to take care of the people that are in New Mexico spending the money in New Mexico. On this split, on the unclaimed winning permutual tickets, you know, changing it to 60% and then 20 and 20, that's a, that's a big difference between splitting it three ways. You know, Mr. Blanchard's reasoning for saying that it costs money to pick up tickets. Well, I mean, we're in a, we're in an era of electronics. I'm sure all that is done electronically, and they know how many tickets didn't get collected and how many tickets are still out there. Um, you know, I, I, I believe it's really hard for anybody to back this without actually seeing actual numbers. Like W L said, we already gave up racing dates. So anytime we give up anything, that just makes the pot smaller and smaller, smaller. So when you start talking about percentages, you're risking to lose a lot when you don't know exactly what amount is going to be based on those percentages. Those are just my two cents.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, Larry Strang, did you want to talk again?
Yes, I've heard twice come up, said it's not going to cost the breeders. Well, it's going to cost the purse fund. It, it's going to cost the breeders. I breed horses and run them. So it's going to, and probably somebody that, that breeds horses and sells them, if those maiden special weights are $18,000 instead of $22,000, that's going to make his horses worth less money. So I, I don't, I think that that's, it's not an honest saying, saying that it's not going to cost the breeders. It is going to cost the breeders. It is going to cost, when it doesn't come out of the, the racetrack's pocket, it's going to come out of our pocket. So it's going to cost us. That's all I get.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, I don't see anybody's hand up. Oh, Susan. Okay, Susan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. I just want to, I'm looking at chat, and there's an individual whose phone is listed is T530pro. And I, they put on there that they'd like to ask a question, but maybe they're unfamiliar with Zoom. So just to maybe give them an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Let me look for them. Oh, here comes somebody else. All right, T.
I see it. T5, T530pro. Sorry I'm late, but I'd like to ask Blanchard a question. Well, we're not doing that. We told Mr. Blanchard this wasn't a Q and A, but if you wanted to make a statement, you could. So you have that opportunity. If you want to do it on chat, I'd be happy to read it.
Yeah, I'm not seeing T530.
Okay.
It's Leslie. I'm sorry, is it Leslie Fenter? I do not see her.
Mary, here I am, right next to you.
Well, I hear you now.
Okay. I was kind of Blanchard, and all these racetracks go behind our backs all the time, trying to squeeze us out of the game. They never come out above board. We don't find out anything half the time till we're at a commission meeting. Something needs to change here. They make 47%, 45, whatever they make is two and a half times more than we get. They're trying to take more money from us. So I'm definitely against it. And I think everybody needs to get on the ball and send emails to the legislature, call them, whatever it takes. That's my two cents, Mary.
Thank you, Leslie.
Welcome.
Susan, you have your hand up again. Did you wish to speak? No?
Okay, Mary, if you don't mind, I'm going to read a few of these chats that have been sent. This is from Carrie. When someone tries to sell me something, i.e. Senate Bill 378, the individual selling needs to have a good pitch. Why I need to buy. Unfortunately, Mr. Blanchard failed in this endeavor. From Brian Mondragon. I'm against this too, but how are we going to make sure this doesn't get passed? I think that's what we need, need to make sure gets addressed. And from Cheryl Clemmer, against this. Remember, once you've changed, we'll never be able to get anything back. Save racing. Casinos are fine. And that's all the chats. Anybody else?
How much they make. They're crying over $600,000.
Mary, we need to mute these folks.
Yeah, I have lost.
I have one additional chat from Freddie Vila Grand. I'm against this bill as beginner breeder. I'm counting on the 10% for breeders. I rely on that. I think racetracks need to pay their half. Okay, anybody else, Mary?
No, I'm not seeing anybody else. At least they don't have their hand raised.
Okay, well, I think, I think everyone, to be fair, has had ample opportunity. So I'm going to move that we close the meeting. And again, I'll encourage you, if you didn't get a chance to speak, and you want to get your position heard, please email us. Mary, maybe you want to read off the email address. I know it was on the Zoom invitation, but why don't we go ahead and just repeat the email address for those that may have missed it. Plus, it's on our website, right?
Right, it is on the website. It is N M H B A at N M horsebreeders.com.
Okay.
Or you can even call us. If you'd like to call us on the phone, that's fine too.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate everybody participating. Mike Logan wanted to say something before we go. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Tom. You know, I'd just like to point out to the membership that I think most of us are aware of how vital this is. And, and, you know, I, I would just urge you to reach out to any member or the office with any questions you have, and try, try, try to, we'll try to help inform you the best we can. This is, you know, this, this is a, an active bill, as we all know, and the urgency that there is a timeline. So, you know, if you could call us or email us tomorrow with your opinion and, and your concerns, we sure would appreciate it. With that, I'll close, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Mary, I, I, there was another, this has been brought up a couple of times by folks that participated in the meeting. It was just asked again in a chat message, asking about the numbers. So we'll come up with those numbers. We'll post them and share them with, on Facebook. And we can do a mass email as well on what we believe the numbers to be. And be it in the interest of transparency and to increase everybody's understanding on what this means. And, and we'll go from there. Okay? So I appreciate y'all participating. I appreciate our board members coming together at the last minute to do this. And Mary, thank you for all you've done pulling this Zoom meeting together. I thought it worked really well. So again, thank you all for participating. It's important we hear from you. And don't forget to email your comments if you have them. Okay? And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you.